Good afternoon, everybody. This is our January 23rd, 2024 edition of the Building Committee's on Orniculture Rebuild, and Happy New Year. I just want to pump up the moment, just because it's been a couple of months now, and I know we have a couple newer faces at the table. I think it would be worth our while to stick around the table to introduce ourselves, and then sort of go over what we're supposed to represent. So, I'm Andy Lickin, over in Secretor Dennis.
I'm Gary Clark, Construction Manager for Smoloff Construction.
I'm Tom Barry, from Keener Lock.
I'm John Barrett. I taught here once, one time, at James', and now I represent the industry of Orniculture and Forestry.
Jen Werner, former Community College and Vocational Ag Teacher, fellow coordinator on the advisory board.
Mark Devon, I'm Architect and Horticultural Instructor here.
Joe Bianca, Principal.
Ellen Fantini, Project Manager with SMMA.
Maddie DeWolff, Designer at SMMA.
Matt Rice, Architect with SMMA.
James? Oh, sorry. James on spot, one of the teachers in the program area.
Melanie Chardier, I'm the Vocational Director.
I'm Sean Mahoney, Forest Park Specialist for State of Massachusetts. I hope everyone through this one process.
Jim Moran, I'm Jim Moran, from Canada.
Rick Laquagio, Wes Laquagio, Insurgent Commercial General Contractor at North Hampton, and I'm on the Board of Trustees and representing the Chair of the Building Committee.
I think at this point, I'll turn it over to Helen for the presentation.
Sure. I did not move the paper with me.
I haven't.
Oh, don't thank you. Just know if you ever rely on me. All right, so if you're going to back our way into the cost, let's talk about what we did today. Our team has been here on site as well as in the area for a couple of reasons. One, we met with the city of North Hampton and had a tech review session, which is a precursor to submitting the pre-development permits. That's site plan review, stormwater permit, et cetera, something that obviously needs to happen. A long time in fashion to not put this up. It was a very productive meeting with them. No bombshells, no unexpected questions. It was a good dialogue. So, we do feel like we would be ready to proceed with submitting permits. This one, we're going to get building permits, the site plan review. So, that was good. And then came over here to campus, and we met with James, and Joe, and Melanie, and Andy, and a handful of wonderful students, to really dig in into deeper, more immersive detail on climbing structure. And we have some imagery from that that we'll share with you. We did have the site development cost estimate done. Share that information with you, how come next steps. And so, again, tech review was very smooth. We had pre-submitted the drawing package. It is mostly focused on site elements, but the plans and sections, elevations are also included over the next. Here we are with level of development at DD. Again, just excerpted from the DD plans. And then we moved on. Maybe, Matt, you want to walk into the climbing structure review we had this morning?
So, the climbing structure, I think, is probably one of the most unique pieces of this project in terms of making sure that it can support curriculum needs in terms of forestry and orniculture. So, what we wanted to do was make sure that we had a good understanding of what the design of it should be. And the way for us to get there is really to talk to staff and students about what it was. Rather than looking at two-dimensional drawings, which we are here right now, we actually thought that the best way of getting a consensus understanding was using a virtual reality version of this model. So, the same exact model that you see here. The staff and students had the opportunity to put on the virtual reality headset and really look at what we were thinking of. And what we're thinking of was not exactly correct, and that was really the expectation going in. We knew that we didn't have it correct yet, but I think we got some really good feedback from people being able to both look at what was on screen, observing other people using the virtual reality environment, and really having some good discussion about really critical topics like usability, safety, how the log that would be located in the center of that piece would get replaced on a regular basis, to be determined what that regular basis is. But we want to make sure that whatever is there is flexible in terms of whether it gets to be modified. Important also to understand what the scope of that is, because it will be the subject of the grant funding that's already in place. So, we know that there's a certain amount of funding that would go towards that, so we need to make sure that it's right, and that we understand sort of what aspects of the design can be put towards that grant. So, that's really what we did. I don't know. The other slides is to have been some understanding of just the surrounding space that's there. What you see in the background, around the climbing structure, is the climbing tower, if you will, the vertical piece that extends up. We have a 30-foot height of clear height in terms of being able to use climbing activities and speed climbing to that elevation. We talked about where the elevations and surrounding pieces of steel, and sort of where rope attachments would be. So, we did get into a fair amount of detail with this, and that was really the intent. And so, we have a little bit of work to do now to go back and talk with our structural engineer, given the feedback that we received. And I know that staff and students are going to do a little bit of research as well to figure out what maybe the maximum size log or trunk would be in there in terms of climbing, because that'll affect our structural design. But I think we all have good action items coming out of that meeting in terms of getting us very close to what would be sort of the final design of that climbing structure. I have a few more slides in there, too, just to give some perspective.
So, before we move into the cost, are there any questions on the climbing structure? I don't feel like we took yet very feedback this morning to develop that important element. All right, so, good news, bad news. Good news is that the estimate is trending down at SD after value engineering and having shifted to an all-wood construction. We had been at 6.2 million. Again, that's construction costs, not including soft costs. With this new estimate at DD, we are at 5.1 million. So, again, trending in the right direction, but not clear in the number of units. So, we have priced alternates, but all of them are add-alternates, but didn't want to make the committee aware that, you know, we have included the tubing parade of wood in the shop spaces, but not the actual head end, not the actual equipment that would run it. So, again, there's not an easy way to go back in later and put in the tubing that is in the project. But if you were to want to purchase the equipment at this point, that's the number 235. Next two were options related to the sewage pumping station that nurture design group wanted priced. But what, again, we have in the estimate right now is a robust pump that does not require a generator, as I understand it. That last item is if we did want to go to a generator, that's 745, 485, as well as some other projects, so those are two generator options. So, again, we have not had much further discussion about these alternatives, as they are additional costs. But again, we did want to keep track of them.
And that generator would power the whole building, the whole facility?
So, right now, I believe we have just the emergency lighting, like, in the base building as required by code. And what is in for the pump does not require generator power. Is this true?
Generator, I think, would also, I think, would address freeze protection for both the plumbing as well as the fire protection system.
Does the school have any generators?
I believe the understanding is the generator that we have doesn't have the capacity to possibly power this building.
So, what's current generating?
Emergency lighting, basically, the existing business.
Were there any field generators that could be available from its property, Mastaw, anything like that? It's a temporary generator, or eligible to begin to such things.
So, all of this information is relatively fresh. The estimate came in the other day, last Tuesday. We are aware that the target number is five million. What we had been discussing with the working group was potentially taking a bit of a pause. We see if we can get more information on the wood construction number, because we do have some questions about that number. And we've also reopened that, call it can of worms, metal can. Should we be maybe submitting that option as well, to try to have that?
So, I'll just take it back off of that, and open up the discussion of questions or input. But I want to think, SMMA, we had an update meeting this past Friday. We reviewed the estimate, I think you saw it. And from my viewpoint, I know SMMA is talking about the target construction cost of $5 million, just as a review, yet again. When we added the soft cost, because from the school's perspective, I have to consider the soft cost as part of the project. So, looking at all said and done, the estimate that is in front of us, we are closer to 7.2 million. We have approximately $6 million available to us. Again, not to rehash, but grant money, that time is ticking. So, that was a concern for me this past Friday, so I raised that with SMMA. Knowing that we have a Board of Trustees meeting this evening, the agenda for the board meeting was to review and potentially vote on DD. That was the agenda played of this evening. Knowing that the DD estimate that came back last week, we are still north of $1 million in the budget, and that was a concern. Which is why I raised, you know, I want to give the board a full scoop of options here. So, we have the DD estimate. I went back and looked at the figures that we were talking about back in November, around the metal prefab building construction cost of $1 million itself, overlaid out with the current estimate when it came to the site prep and everything else. And that total, all including soft costs, is about 5.9 million. So, we agreed on Friday that we would obviously have a building committee meeting today. We want input today, but I have to be prepared to present to the board this evening. These are really the two paths that we have tonight. And we are at the 12th hour. We haven't gotten to the scheduling here. And I need the board to make a decision, okay? One option is this evening, as the Board of Trustees, they are the ultimate authority decision makers. They could opt for, continue along with DD, which is what we just saw, which is the light wood construction. And how we close that gap, I don't know how we close that gap. Option two is, we move forward with the metal prefab option, which would appear that we could actually now begin to move forward this evening. We can begin lots of bid, and again, our hope is to break ground in late April, if we get the special approval. Option three was, and as Helen just said, the February board meeting is February 13th. Perhaps this evening, the board would want to pay for a separate or local estimate on the DD estimate, to make sure that those numbers are pretty valid for the region. And then the board would have to vote on that February 13th. I cannot fathom a decision from the board extending it on February 13th. We're going to have the building done, completed, grant money spent, and opened up for the fall of '25. So, my personal feeling, I'm just going to go out there, and you can yell at me what you want, but as somebody who has to look at the overall budget, has to look at the entire campus, has to look at the other capital needs that we have on campus, I would not be doing my job if I did not say we should be looking at the metal prefab building, and we need to get the ball rolling like yesterday. That's where I stand. We can debate it, but I open it up to others.
So, could you explain to me how we got there? Because in our last meeting, I remember the delta being more like, $100,000 is off the top of my head, so now you're saying it's closer to $100,000.
Right, so I used the metal prefab, the structure cost that we were looking at back in November was just wasn't $3 million. So, I replaced that $3 million with the construction cost that we see in the estimate was 4.1 million for the wood construction. So, I just replaced those two. The site work, back in November, we were looking at site work cost of $994,000. The estimate that we are looking at as of last week, the site work is $7599. So, there was a big saving for the site prep.
Above the general requirements?
Yep. So, sort of the overall general requirements, general conditions, so building permitting, insurance, overhead and profit, back in November, we were looking at like a 20% markup. Now, this past week, when I looked at those figures, it's like a 15.5% markup, so there was an additional savings there. Other differences from November to last week, design contingency has come down. So, back in November, we were looking at design contingency of approximately $406,000. Last week is down to $238,000. However, escalation for construction back in November, we were looking at $97,000, it is up to $112,000. So, I was trying to use last week's estimate numbers, but then overlaying just the metal prefab construction number.
Something tells me it's just not apples to apples. If it were, I would totally agree with you. Metal buildings save us $1 million. No question to it. But I have the feeling there are a lot of other moving parts there, like the savings in the site prep. Is that necessarily because of the metal building?
No. So... That savings was assuming the wood construction actually.
Right. So, help me just do the math of how we save, and how going to the metal building is going to save us $1 million.
The big difference would be the actual construction cost of the metal building. Back in November, we had a $3,68,741 figure. Last week, the estimate we're looking at right now was $4,161,300.
I'm just going to see those numbers a little bit. Okay. Is part of that, that going to DD, we just now have more detail in the building? Is that necessarily metal to wood? Or is that just more detail in the drawings?
I think it's more detail in the drawings. So, the DD drawings, we advanced assuming the light wood frame construction, based off the guidance that we got at the last board committee meeting. And it's just worth noting that the estimator, when they gave us the price at SD for the light wood frame building, we didn't have a level of detail there. We just asked them to say, give us a typical price for what a light wood frame structural system would be for the building. And they gave us their estimate for what that was, and that's what resulted in that sort of roughly $100,000 delta between approaches. What they've done now is actually estimated member sizes, member spacing, that the structural engineer has developed, given the spans of where we are. And so, there was a result delta, that it was not as cost-effective in terms of the approach to the system, potentially because it's a taller building maybe than like a traditional number that we asked for as schematic design that they were using as basis, which we just didn't have the ability to understand until we got to this next level of detail. So, I think that is really a derivative cause in terms of why there's a delta now that we're seeing.
And what is that delta, which is something I haven't seen in my head?
I don't have it off the top of my head.
Is it almost a full million dollars?
I don't think it was the million, I don't think the full million dollars were just a delta between the prefab metal building, but it was considerable. I think it was $700,000 or somewhere in that range.
Thank you.
Were there any particular elements to go all wood that were especially expensive? So, the, I saw long lattices, were those particularly difficult to come up with, that if those were metal, that would eliminate a especially expensive thing that just is better executed as metal? And so, then we can come to that hybrid placing, where it's like a stick-built thing, but we're not going to do that like unicorn horn thing that is especially hard to make out of wood.
I think it's a good question, something we could actually look at. There were some cases where we already made that type of compromise in terms of the design, the columns that were down the main hallway, because they're taking loads from the two roofs. Those are steel columns as opposed to wood. I think the roof trusses are actually fairly economical for this, the lattice pieces that you're referring to. But it's something that we could certainly ask the estimator to see whether or not there are cost savings to be had.
So, another overlay that I think is worth noting is that there are timber producers in Massachusetts, but there is no smelters in Massachusetts. And so, we can make wood siding here, we can make wood paneling inside here in Massachusetts. Those are superficial, so it's conceivable it could be a metal-framed building that has Massachusetts elements to it. I think that's important to recognize, that perhaps a sort of a hybrid middle ground is a possibility. There is also a real possibility next, or in March, the governor's coming out to make an announcement to support the forest products industry with about $50 million in support. And it's conceivable, I don't have any assurances, but it's conceivable that to help a vocational school that lost an acid-dude fire could be something that also gets announced as a support. Hence, we have a representation here. They can't make any promises now, but there is an enthusiasm to support the wood industry. The reality is, if we go back to earliest conversations, we're talking about carbon, that wood is sequestered carbon, steel is carbon cost. So, what are we trying to teach? And so, I think it's important that wood be well reflected within this building, whether it be simply the superficial elements or the structural elements. Wood can do it, and wood tells a story, and I think we need to be mindful of that and not just pay lip service to it. There's a lot more to it. Installation, windows, all those other elements are all decisions and compromises. But I think it's important to just be mindful of the industry and our community, and who we're preparing these young people to come, train them, and show them. This building here, there's very little wood right here, but it could be different. It doesn't have to be simple.
John, you mentioned in previous meetings, some concessions from the wood industries or grant money or whatever, donations.
Yep.
Are you able to confidently say there's money there, and about, speak to me about how much? I think you've thrown out numbers of 500, 600, 1,000.
So, I think that that's conceivable. Can I make any promises?
Right.
No. And so, with my comment, and free bumps, you can get a bit of coffee. So, that doesn't help any by February, but...
No, I appreciate your comments, and yes, this is all what we need to digest and figure out, but we are running on time.
Sure. Is the Commonwealth willing to step up and pay the difference to do what they're talking about? To use sequestered carbon, renewable materials? Are they willing to pay the difference? Because we are all being asked to do that in our own lives, to invest in air-source heat pumps or renewable-powered vehicles. And frankly, they cost more. And so, public money has to facilitate that with rebates, refunds, or programs. And so, is the Commonwealth willing to do that in an educational environment, TVD? And maybe they're just going to be a dollar short a day later. If that's possible, steel building?
That's great, that's very possible, but again, an unobvious...
Absolutely, yep, yep. John, is that a fair estimation, that no promises can be made? There is interest, but whether there's deliverables is, you can't say yes to it.
Yeah, there's some internal discussion, obviously interest in supporting the school, but it's a question of what does the school need? I think that's an open question.
If the delta was set 100, like, that's part of John's go-away. Like, what's the delta? What's the need to do this at?
Sure. What are the elements? How much wood? How much is it standing locally? Those are all good questions, and then I think, you know, you're on a tight timeline, so that is, that's there, so we needed to say soon if there was going to be some assistance.
It'd be great to have a breakout to run up the flagpole in EDA to say, if for 3/4 of a million, this is what we can do, and there's an announcement coming up where the governor's going to be standing behind a podium in front of the Feller Buncher in UMass Amherst, it could be a story. That's very tantalizing. But maybe the money's not there, maybe the interest isn't there, or the timeline just isn't off. So, it sounds to me like there's a building that can get built if, you know, if we can pull the rabbit out of the hat by February 13th, then maybe a building could be done.
I'm also trying to get to apples to apples here, so in the last meeting, which was SD, we asked you to move forward the light frame, the cost increase, which is totally understandable that always happens. But now, we are still looking at what I would understand to be an SD price for the metal building. Is there the possibility that if we say, yeah, now go with metal building, that we're going to see a similar increase to DD?
Oh, is it possible? I think as you said, as we get more detail, the price tends to go up. That's also why the design contingency tends to come down, because as we get more detail, it's supposed to account for that and sort of match it. Doesn't always work out that way. I will say that with the prefab metal building, we did actually reach out to manufacturers during schematic design, and we got a comparative price. The estimator still used their own price, but they were at least informed, and we knew that it was in the ballpark. So, I'd feel a little bit better in terms of how the metal building number came to be versus actually the light wood frame, because we did that on a fairly quick turnaround because the request came in, and it was a dollar per square foot versus someone looking at the specific geometry. That's it. Thank you.
So, the current project stands, the existing greenhouse will remain at this time? And however we move forward, hopefully be able to add on to the end of the building that extra space we took out, shown in other renderings?
It's the greenhouse and the classroom and the garage?
One classroom, one house.
Yeah, and the headhouse, so it's, there's a complex there.
Yeah.
Is there any demo costs that have to be accounted for to destroy the old footprint? Is that needing to go, or is it like hard parking?
So, I really, when we first started this journey, the thought was to demo, and have it all new. And I think when the realization became more clear that we was going to afford all of the new construction, the discussion was, then why we had demo, what we potentially still use for a while. So, right now, as of today, the plan is not to demo what we have existing, it will be to build what we're talking about new, continue to use the garage space, the one class from the headhouse and greenhouse. Concerns obviously would be potential renovation costs, to get that building to last extra years. But we're going to be demoing it at this point. The only thing that we could demo would be that the back concrete slab.
That's what I was talking about. I didn't know if you were obliged to do that, or if it's just hard parking.
Yeah, that's up for discussion.
And that's any renovations that we may need to do, certainly to do in-house, like we've done all these other projects. And so, what is the feelings of leaving back the concrete slab there? Like John says, it seems to have some use. Mark, James?
Well, the parking part did until we dug a bunch of holes in it. You know, where the slab that you can park on currently, the raised portion, you know, we were told at some point we couldn't really use it because the railings didn't necessarily meet engineering code.
I think the reality is, the plan is going to dictate what happens in that area, because that becomes the entrance and exit of the complex.
Yeah.
So, I don't know that we know the answer to that question.
Okay.
For that particular part of the building that you're talking about, the footprint.
Well, I do want to say that what we discussed today, based on nurture design group's analysis of the accessibility of the path leading down to the new building, it would be optimal to get rid of that slab, because we need the space to not require the others on the pathway. Just the slab.
Which slab?
The slab that's...
That was the old parking bar.
The first...
Sticks way out.
Yeah. But the back classroom doesn't have to be...
Right.
But probably should have railings.
But probably should have railings.
It has railings. But it would be ideal if we could bring it up to code so we can utilize it as an outdoor space.
Yeah, yep. Yeah. We'll see.
Yeah, we'll look at that one.
Yeah.
It's a renovation.
Or flash.
Yeah.
Whatever. Some of it you can use for a number of...
After construction.
So once again, we're at a crossroads. Sorry, I think we've been at a crossroads. I just wanted...
Helen, has these processes ever changed? Did the crossroads ever get easier?
Sometimes they do.
Sometimes they do.
I did update the schedule based on the conversation last week, which I anticipated this pause till the next, more interest is available in the meeting. But if we were to decide not to push forward one way or the other and explore some deeper dive into costs and confirmation of costs, it still does place us at a moment at the end of the day where the project would be complete by summer of 2025, which again is the goal. There's also time by which your grant money needs to be spent, and it's June of 2025. So certainly most of your grant would be spent by June of 2025, and we do, you know, get underway, so we are looking at, yeah. So yes, we're still missing some quick weather potentially in the spring. But the schedule holds together still when we do decide to do this.
I have a question about the grant and some of the granularity to it. Do you need it to be ribbon cutting done to receive funding? Or do you need to have spent the money? Because you could pre-buy things, pre-pay for things. I'm just wondering what the sort of legality of that might be.
I think getting the clarifying question answered. Past skill scout to grant, it's been purchased, installed, we talked about equipment.
I think in this one, it's construction costs, about reimbursing.
Yeah.
So we would have had to be paid for and received the service before you can put it in green.
I think you're probably right, but it would be nice to know if there was that sort of flexibility that you could stockpile it. Yeah, like, oh, we paid the painters, they haven't done it. Here's the...
Which we wouldn't recommend that you do.
No, no, no. But fair, but like, if we got down to brass tacks, the last finish work could conceivably be... I think the functionality wise, you want the building to be usable and call, that's the real concern. So I see that.
On the last timeline, it looks like you pushed the kickoff off by a month. Maybe you say construction starts on that day, but it's not up there. But do I remember seeing that the actual demolition or site work and construction would actually start until after school was out? Was that on there, the last one?
I don't think so. I think we'd always assumed that this site would be fenced off and being safe.
Okay, so that would start right away?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Just from my planning, you know...
No, I know. Ideally, you do want them starting one through the whole, but it also means...
Not necessarily. For me, that we can easily work around. That'd be less than important, by the way.
That's the right side.
In May, I was thinking a long ways off. As doctors decide, the bidding takes several weeks, and then before the bidding, you have all the CD, all the permitting, it's, despite my fear.
And this is a doable, for stick build, it's a doable to be done.
One year.
All right. We're involved for tonight's VOT meeting. Documents are well enough along, we could give them to a local contractor to give us an independent estimate, which we have to pay for, the conflict of interest or whatever.
Well, we had approximately, we talked about this in this past Friday, I thought you could be somewhere in $8,000 to $10,000, maybe it comes out in the $6 million.
And the pedal would be bigger bill?
Not necessarily. I think the information we're getting, Matt, Greg, get them wrong, it is, there's a portion of this delegated design, so then they have to take it and do their engineering counts, our engineer does a certain amount. I think we were coming up sort of evenly with respect to...
It would feel faster.
It would feel faster.
Rise and...
Exactly.
Right. Because you said something, 14 weeks, right? I thought.
In terms of getting the new building up?
Getting delivered, be 14 weeks, or is it the construction?
No, I think it's in that range, I think it's in 14, in terms of starting the process with them, to still see something showing up.
Right, and then they have to be constructed.
But the erection will also go, in terms of business.
So the timeframe overall would be the same or similar?
I think similar. Potentially the local contractor, I think we could get their schedule input as well, which might be valuable as an approach, just to validate or understand what...
And how, so the documents are executed showing the wood framing and the wood siding? And then how would we address them, given an ultimate price on a pre-engineered metal building? So we don't have any, say, info, they would go, like you guys did, go to a supplier, vendor, rebuilding, whatever, and say, this is what we're looking at?
And we have the communication that went back and forth, but I think we have, the section is still the same of the building, it was just the length of the building got shorter versus what we were talking about.
And who did you talk to?
I think it was SETCO that was, or CECO.
CECO.
C E T C O, however it's pronounced. They were the one that was most responsive and actually gave us dollar numbers in terms of fabrication.
Did you talk direct to the manufacturer?
Yes, yes.
Okay. That means the way you move forward. Anybody else got any burning questions? We're not going to know anything until after tonight.
Could someone just speak to how energy efficiency compares between the two options, metal prefab and wood? Just in terms of overall cost per year, say, just generally speaking, just to refresh my memory.
So I think there will be incremental additional operating costs, incremental additional energy consumption as sort of driving factor behind that. Given that the prefab metal building is a separate set of envelope of our value requirements for just acknowledging that the building is built in a different way. And so it's still completely code compliant in terms of energy code where we are. So it's adopted stretch code here, right? Versus the wood frame construction, that is a little bit maybe more traditional in terms of what the energy code is expecting. But it's really in between those two levels of code compliance that I think the delta exists. So it can't say that it's a completely sort of neutral decision in terms of energy consumption and operating cost, but it's not order of magnitude different. It's not like we're going to be building an inefficient building as prefab metal building. It's just going to be slightly less than what otherwise.
Thank you.
So in a nutshell, the operating costs, energy wise, probably be more with the metal building?
Certainly more, yes. Sorry if I misspoke in there in terms of up and down, but yes.
Well, you addressed it in a roundabout way.
Yeah, I think at this point, I feel like it's pretty clear that the wooden building would be nicer in a number of ways over the long term, what we can't afford it.
That's what we all were hoping.
If you could hold the breath until February 13th, that might give Boston a chance to ride in on a way towards, I just, you know, that's their bucket. If they can't come up with something, then...
John, all options are on the table. I'm not discounting your remarks by any means. I appreciate them. What do you say? We all said, SMMA for today?
Nope, that was it.
So that's, hopefully we'll end up with...
Minus the greenhouse.
Eventually.
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 Minus the greenhouse from the start.
I think we've got, yeah, both version. There you go.
They're all flexing.
So what's that?
Roof.
Well, okay.
What you got?
So that's additional $3,000 square feet around numbers? We were almost at 10 with original footprint, right?
Right, we're at eight now, and we've always excluded the greenhouse from that square footage. But greenhouse is, I think approximately 1,800 square feet, somewhere in that value. But it wasn't gross construction, or gross floor in terms of construction, because greenhouse is a different animal in terms of what it takes to build it.
Is it fair to assume that the existing building, because the classroom, the greenhouse and all that, is usable? The fire marshal didn't say you can't be in here, you can use it for a year, but then you're done. So it's still a functional space.
Yeah, with that functional space.
Yeah. Improvements would be welcome, but are not necessary.
There are some improvements that are necessary. But we are aware of that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But there's not an accident.
Hopefully they suffer, they'll get done.
And for you guys, money conscious side, the program is removing all the trees that are in the way, hopefully to save us money. And if we have a willing group of students who would do anything else, that might help in that regard too, as far as, you know, pickaxes and shovels. You know, if there's anything else we can do to help get some of the ready-made costs, you know, ready to build costs down, we'd be happy to do it.
And just to bring the committee up to speed, since we met last time, I remember the comment we made, talking about the slab, it was to punch holes in it. So that was some of the testing that we had to do with the soil, so this is more testing. And the good news is, it seems like we kept getting bad news after bad news, some of the good news was the soil in that, okay, there was no contaminants in the soil that we had to deal with. So that was positive news. I'm not sure if this is positive news, but back to the students and, you know, instructors getting ahead of the curve and trying to move some trees. If you found a graveyard of some stuff buried a few generations ago, so we'll keep that in the back of our mind as we continue to dig, that there may be other things we find. So I said we need to buy some valuable things out of these areas, we sell them. So that's the latest as far as soil, that was good news. I think it's also just great to point out the fact, you talked about the savings on the site costs, and some of that is directly related to what James was doing as well in terms of being able to take out some of the trees and not put those costs onto the general contractor. So there's a lot of that effort that's reflected compared to where we are.
How many, how many trees we talked to?
Well, we moved three. We hadn't dug and moved them. We have four large remaining ones left, and then more down the road at some point. You know, like to accommodate the addition, the remaining trees between the two buildings would have to go. They don't have to leave right now for this building to be built, some of them. To give you an idea, so it would be like four more full-sized trees down the road.
And is it worthwhile to have the students do it as a learning experience and getting the wood for your pile type of thing? Because off the top of my head, through little, no cost of the site contractor coming in and taking out some trees, they're just going to come in and... But there are a lot of them, they come in with some large scale...
They're big, and Northern's going to come. So Northern's going to bring its brain in, it's going to make a show of it, have it an educational opportunity. It won't take long for a crane to take it apart. That's going to happen. And the subsequent all wood's going to get built locally and is available back to us.
All right. So it's also good therapy for the current students to kind of help say goodbye to stuff.
I did want to also note that the general conditions, general apartments also went down, partly because of Andy and Crystal, that the space below in super tenants building is your site office, so it's a trip. And so that was reflected in the purpose of that.
Okay. Anything else? Appreciate your time and effort.
Thank you.